Agenda questions. Please limit your questions at this time to resolutions under new business on this agenda. As a matter of fairness, you are asked to limit your questions to no more than one, and your remarks to no longer than three minutes. If you are here representing a group, please identify yourself, the group, and your position in the group. If you are here as an individual, please give us your name and address. This section of public participation will be limited to 15 minutes. Please specify the resolution you are referring to in your question, please.
Evelyn Slocum, what do you bring ahead, please? Resolution 15J, therapeutic health services. What type of therapeutic health services are covered under the section School Solutions?
To be honest with you, Slocum, I don't know.
Okay.
It doesn't mean that I need to find out.
Can you get that to me?
I would be more than happy to.
Okay, great, great. And then, just because we are having the presentation, I just wanted to mention that when we view the recording, that you can't see it, but... So, on the Board of Ed, when you click down and you click up the Agenda column, and the minutes, and then the video, can we have a fourth column with any attachments that should be, like, the presentation, or any attachments that should be attached to the Agenda?
I'll certainly discuss that with the board. We typically, like, this presentation will be more than happy to put on.
Right.
I know the PowerPoint for Budget was on.
Okay.
Excuse me for one minute.
Sorry.
I can answer the questions.
Absolutely.
The therapeutic services we offer, students who are in that program receive group therapy each day, they receive individual therapy, family therapy, and parent support.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Anyone else?
9th and 249, March Drive. Other question about 15R, for the AT&amp;T proposal. It says the compound location and access drive shown on the plan is preliminary. If any changes need to be made, will they be significant?
The access drive that they have is preliminary based on everything that is available, all the information that we have available right now. As we go through the rest of the process, or as AT&amp;T, I should say, goes through that process, going through Planning Board and things like that, there may be adjustments to it. We have no idea what they may or may not be.
What do you think the best way is for the neighborhood to stay informed? There are changes. Would that be through the council, through the Board of Ed?
There are procedures through the Planning Board to have that done. Planning Board is probably the best place for you to get any information as far as updates.
Okay, thank you.
You're very welcome.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
Thank you.
Dr. Shown, do you have a report for this evening?
I do. I have four things this evening. Can everybody hear me, or am I better off on mic?
Mic.
Mr. Ferris says I'm better off on mic, so I'm using that. Okay, I have four things this evening. They're not in order of priority, but they are all equally important. I'd like to start off this evening talking about Resolution 15Q. Resolution 15Q is dedicated to the award of the STEAM addition to CR Construction Company. I want to remind everyone that we started this whole process, the discussion of it, back on October 19th, 2016. We met with a group of very dedicated teachers and administrators at the high school, and we started talking about our STEAM classes. And we wanted to figure out if we were doing our very best as far as STEAM instruction for our students, where we were doing it, how we were doing it, did we need to update our courses, did we need to look at where things were taking place? And we decided after looking at the courses that we could definitely do some updates. And we do that all the time in every curricular area. It's important that I bring that up, because a decision to put an addition on the high school, or any other place in our district, is based on educational need. So, the need was for the coursework, but it was also for the places that our courses were being housed. And there were a number of different presentations throughout the last year and a half that clearly showed that a lot of the classrooms that our STEAM instruction was taking place didn't look like an area that STEAM instruction should be taking place. We knew it in our hearts, we knew it from the literature we read, but we also knew it because this dedicated group of teachers and administrators got on a little yellow school bus, and spent a day traveling to districts that either decided to put an addition on their building to fit their rooms differently, or in a case like Dwight Engle, would build a $20 million facility. And we came back excited, saying, "This is where STEAM instruction could be, and how can we do it so that our high school students can have the very best programs that we saw out there?" And that's when we started including our Facilities Committee of the Board, and we brought in our architect, Mr. Mike Milliman, who's in the back. If you could just wave a little bit. And we gave Mike a whole bunch of things. We told him we learned a lot about open spaces, and about movable furniture, and about the way things could look so that our kids could collaborate in a totally different way than a traditional classroom. And Mike sat with us, Mr. Milliman, over a course of a number of different meetings, and after making a whole boatload of modifications to original plans, we came up with something that we were really happy with. And when we did that, Mr. Milliman did what he needed to do with the Department of Ed, and with the Planning Board, and we said, "We're going to go out to bid on this project." And when we knew that was coming to fruition, we wanted to make sure that the oversight of this project, should we be fortunate enough to have it, we wanted to make sure that we would be good to go as far as construction management is concerned. Mr. Vandermark, back there. Where's Mr. Vandermark? Everybody knows Mr. Vandermark. He's great, great, great at what he does, but when you're building a new addition, you need to make sure that the oversight of that addition is exactly what you need it to be for the safety and security of the students who are walking past, and also the construction of the building itself. We were fortunate with the Facilities Committee to interview three construction management companies, all with equally great experience. But the one person, or the one group, that we felt would be the best fit for Mawa, and those of you who are in Mawa know Mawa has a fit, we thought the best fit for Mawa would be the Cambridge group. And in the back, if you guys would wave, back row is Mr. Greg Romero and Mr. Peyton Riley. Would you guys stand up for a second? The board has not all seen your face. Okay, that's the face of the new addition. It is their job to make sure it comes out right. So, fast forward from October 19th, next second comes around, and we had 10 people sat around a table similar to this, who bid on our job. We had 10 different bids at 10 different prices. We were fortunate enough, though, to have CR Construction Company bid the project for just a small amount over what it is we intended the project to be. So, this evening before the Board is a resolution to vote on the construction of a new addition at the high school, which Mr. Pascal and his team are certainly excited about, and our central office team and Board is very excited about, because although it's on the campus of the high school, it is not just going to be for high school students. And we think that that's going to be an amazing, an amazing thing. As far as when do we start, should the Board vote in the affirmative this evening? We have a pre-construction meeting that will be set up shortly through our construction management company with our architect, and it is there. We'll talk about safety and first steps, and what that looks like, because it is our hope, fingers crossed, it works out, for a September 2019 opening. So, we're looking at a year and change, and construction will be taking place as students are in. But this is what construction management companies do, right? You make sure that everything continues to do what it does, and our children remain safe at the same time. So, we're very excited. So, I think that that required just a little bit of a background. Okay, two more items, and I promise you I'll go quick. Again, not in order of priority, but equally important. We have two additions to our staff on resolutions this evening. The first is Resolution 16B. Resolution 16B is for the Joyce Kilmer principal position. After reviewing, receiving, and reviewing over 165 applications, our interview committee comprised of teachers and administrators interviewed 13 candidates for the Joyce Kilmer principal position. Through this process, we narrowed our finalists down to four, who met with our central office team. We're recommending Mr. Joshua Chewie for the position of Joyce Kilmer principal. Mr. Chewie has served as a 3rd, 4th, and 5th grade English Language Arts and Social Studies teacher for the Patterson Public Schools. Through this role, Mr. Chewie also worked as lead teacher. Currently, Mr. Chewie is Assistant Principal at the Rosa Parks Community School of Pre-Kindergarten through Grade 7 Building, which is part of the Orange Public School District. Mr. Chewie's resume expresses he's dedicated, determined, goal-driven administrator with a solid commitment to the social and academic growth and development of every student. He's earned his bachelor's degree in Communication Studies and a master's degree in Administration, and we are very much looking forward to welcoming Mr. Chewie. If you would just be kind enough to stand up. Just a few moments. Okay, the second recommendation this evening is Resolution 16C. After reviewing and receiving over 168 applications, our interview committee comprised of teachers and administrators interviewed 12 candidates for our Supervisor of Instruction K-5 position. Through this process, we narrowed our finalists to four, who all met with the central office team. We're recommending Mrs. Jennifer Globaki for the position of Supervisor of Construction K-5. Mrs. Globaki has served as a 4th grade teacher in Dumont, as well as an elementary teacher as she worked in the Presfield Public Schools Gifted and Talented Enrichment Programming. Currently, Mrs. Globaki serves as Supervisor of Special Projects for the Presfield Public School District, where she observes and evaluates staff, oversees District G Suite Initiative, and coordinates staff-specific programs. Miss Globaki earned her bachelor's degree in Psychology and her Master's of Arts in Teaching in Elementary Education from Quinnipiac University. Miss Globaki then earned her master's degree in Educational Leadership from Ramapo College, who's graduating tonight. We look forward to working with Miss Globaki in our growing elementary school program and targeting instruction across the district, especially as it relates to language arts and mathematics, and vertical articulation for our secondary content areas. It was a pleasure to meet you, a pleasure to interview you, and we look forward to working with Miss Globaki. Please stand. Okay. Finally, one of the things that we have tried to prepare for, for some time, is a technology audit presentation. Here this evening, we have Sue DeVito, who is our Supervisor of Technology Integration, as well as our Director of Technology, Carlos Rosa, to just give you an idea of hardware, software, our infrastructure, and more importantly, our recommendations moving forward. So, with that said, I'm going to turn it over to you, yes?
All right. Thank you, Dr. Shown, and thank you to the Board for having us. Tonight's presentation is broken up into two segments. We have, the first portion will be software and applications, with the second portion being our infrastructure and IT. So, getting into the software and applications. Throughout the whole district, we have 73 different software applications offered that are paid pre-K to 12. Of those 73, this is a breakdown by discipline. If you add them up, you'll notice that it adds up to more than 73, and that's because sometimes our applications can be used cross-disciplinary, meaning something might be used in history or social studies, as well as English Language Arts. The other denotes special education, visual performing arts, physical education, world language, library and media, and business.
Does this include applications that are specific to a textbook? Like, we approved the history textbook last meeting, and there's software that goes with that. Would that count as an application?
That should be in here. So, when we were gathering all of the software and applications, we reached out to building principals, as well as the supervisors of the disciplines, and so we gathered the information from them. So, if they included that information to us in terms of their online text resources, that was included in this total. This is now broken down by grade levels, so you can see that we have 20 offered at the elementary, 24 at the middle, and 46 at the high. And again, if you add those up, it'll end up being more than the 73, because we have applications that are offered in multiple grade-level buildings. So, breaking that down a little bit more in a granular aspect, here is everything that's paid for at the elementary school level, but I do want to denote that G Suite for Education, Microsoft O365, are free applications, but they were included in this presentation because they're so widely used throughout the district. We felt that we had to put it on this presentation for you. Anything that's bolded is used across multiple school levels, meaning elementary, middle, or high school. Here's the breakdown for middle school. And then here's high school. And you'll notice at the high school, it expands greatly with the number of applications offered, and that's because of our wide range of activities and electives that are offered at the high school. O365 is one of our productivity suites. It was introduced to our staff in September of 2015, where at the middle school and high school level, we had ediscap come in, and they offered a significant amount of training for those faculty members. This year, coming in, offering professional development, there have so far been two large group trainings, and 11 small group or one-to-one trainings throughout the district on O365. New to our productivity suite this year is G Suite for Education. This was introduced to the staff in September of 2017, and across pre-K to 12, there have been a total of 20 large group trainings, and 129 small group or one-to-one trainings. Taking all of this information, Carlos and I recommend going forward that we are going to streamline the software and application purchases. Right now, they're purchased at a department level or building level, and we'd like to cross-reference those purchases for continuity across the district, making sure that all the elementary schools have the same applications. That'll also help with training, and that's also going to help and save us money, because if we have one building buying a set of licenses, and another building buying maybe the same set of licenses, we can bundle that up, we could get a better price for the district. We're also looking into creating a single sign-on dashboard for next year. So, that means, you can imagine right now, you have, like, all these different passwords for all your different applications that you go to in your personal life, and teachers and students have that same thing based off of every single platform they go to. So, we're investigating a single sign-on dashboard, where they could log in, and then up comes a main screen with every application they have access to. Because they've already done that initial sign-in to get to that dashboard, all they would have to do is click on the icon, and they wouldn't then have to log into the next application. And furthermore, developing a resource database for staff, so we're looking at developing a website that would give teachers a breakdown of every paid application they have at their fingertips throughout the district, so they know what they have accessible to use in their classroom. And now, I'm going to hand it off to Carlos for our infrastructure.
Our infrastructure. We currently have 3,841 technology devices that are spread amongst the staff and students as district-wide. We've broken down these devices in these categories or device platforms: laptops, desktops, printers, Elmos, projectors, Promethean boards, and MIMIO. So, you see the number there, the high school, 826 laptops, Ramapo Ridge, Joyce Kilmer, 227, Monapi Meadows, 61, 93 for GW, and 99 for Betsy Ross. For those that are probably asking, what is an Elmo? An Elmo is a document camera that allows, it projects, uses our projection units, and displays any content that the teacher puts beneath it, and allows them to interact with the actual students. The MIMIO, for those that don't know, it lets our teachers use our whiteboards and convert them into interactive boards, pretty much like the Promethean, which is an interactive So, you may ask, all these devices, how does it work? Right? We put this together and make this function for instruction. So, we use three main components: switches, routers, and wireless access points. And each one has a specific function. So, I'm going to turn this over to Sue DeVito for this actual presentation, to give you an idea of how the actual infrastructure works. Good, Sue?
This really kept me in touch with my, like, brought me back to my elementary days, so if you'll humor me here with a little bit of our simulation, if you will. We have our roadmap. So, the switch is the highway, right? So, it switches that first image you saw on the left of the previous slide, and the switch lets all of our information, which is the traffic, through the highway. Ready? Here. There's our information. All right. And then we have a router. The router is the traffic officer, so it's going to direct the information, which are the cars, where to go. So, if our information is traveling through the switch, the router's going to stop it and move it along to a different portion of the highway. But we need to get onto our router, onto our switch. So, we have our wireless access points. They're the ON ramp. It gives the information, or the cars, access to the highway. Right? So, if you're ever looking around the building, and it's those white boxes on the ceiling, those are our access points. And then our firewall is our security gate. So, this is going to prevent unsafe information, which are the cars, from going through the highway. So, here we go. It's a car, and it's getting stopped by our firewall.
Thank you. So, part of our...
Sorry, that's very elementary.
So, part of ON ramping, we utilize wireless access points. And here, we've had, we have three main ON ramps, which is our Mawa Wi-Fi, and that's for all district-owned devices: laptops, laptops, any tablets, or Wi-Fi required devices. Then you have your BYOD Wi-Fi, which is for personal use. Our staff and students are allowed to actually jump on that and connect to the Internet. And then we have BYOD guest Wi-Fi, and that's where obvious for the guests, presenters that come in, they can connect and have their presentations utilizing our infrastructure.
Do you have them throttling at different speeds?
I do. So, the question is throttling. Do I have them set at certain speeds as to not overutilize our existing bandwidth and take away from instruction? We do. Here is our diagram of our infrastructure. It is a star topology, or otherwise known as hub and spoke. The hub and spoke allows us to provide resources to every spoke or building equally. So, every building gets equal access to all resources. Some of the resources are Internet access, print and file share, applications, security, and any other resource that needs to be deployed throughout the district. So, our next couple of slides are going to show you a breakdown of the switches, the routers, and the wireless access points per school. So, you notice the high school, and the cost, the third column is a cost, that's what it cost us, and you see that there's an E-Rate refund. We participate in E-Rate, which is a federal program, and it's based on free and reduced lunch, and that, those pieces of equipment that are eligible, we get reimbursed on. And you see our one-time costs below. Quickly go through Ramapo Ridge, Joyce Kilmer, Monapi Meadows, George Washington, Betsy Ross, Central Office Server Room, Building 7, which is the Annex at the High School, which we have the AutoCAD, the garage, district-wide here are our total, our one-time costs, Now, all this, all these, all these devices and connectivity, we need, you know, it's put together and maintained effectively by our staff, technology personnel, our staff, which is comprised of Senior System Analyst Fabian Bonilla, System Analyst Richard Ferrara, Computer Technicians James Gricefo, Danielle, Barbara, and myself, who proudly serve the district for over 20 years. As all of this gets put together, we put together a set of recommendations. First one is exploring the possibility of creating a one-to-one environment, modified one-to-one environment for Ramapo Ridge for year 2018, 2019, school year. We recommend to plan the one-to-one environment for the high school, school year 2019, 2020.
So, that we understand, a modified one-to-one means that the laptop units remain in school. We're very close to having that at the ridge at this point, where not many devices are way of doing that, but they won't go home with the students if this goes forward. Whereas the high school piece is going to be different than that. That's a true one-to-one, where the students will be issued a laptop computer, we'll figure out what that looks like, and they'll have it for the year, return it back in the summer for it to be whatever it is you want to do.
Maintain it.
And then have it back. So, that's just it.
We're also researching the potential of a one-to-one modified at Joyce Kilmer, and we also want to increase the pre-K to 3 device count for instructional purposes. And to maintain all of this, we're also recommending to increase our IT staff to support all this additional technology. And that's pretty much it. Any questions from the Board?
We've taken some really great steps over the last four or five years, very cautiously and very meaningfully, and we couldn't have done it without the support of administrators and teachers, and you, and certainly the inclusion of Sue this year. But I've got to tell you, Carlos, your staff and what you have done with all of the devices we have in this district, from everyday use to park testing, to every time that there is a problem, your team is second to none.
Thank you.
Second to none. So, I don't believe we would have a presentation like this, or the hardware and software that we have, not for certainly the teachers using it, and the students being able to, but for your oversight. So, I'd like to thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carlos, and you, Carlos.
I have a question. Sure.
Mr. Pusmarski has a question.
Sure. The approximate age of the infrastructure, so basically the cost itself is to one time of having, but that's obviously one time, and then we'll have to buy it again.
So, switches, all the switches in every school, with the exception of the core, is lifetime. So, for the lifetime of that device, if it breaks, it can be five, 10 years, they'll replace it. Now, you'll ask, "Well, what about the technology that changes?" Well, if that technology that's in place currently supports faster speeds, 10 and 40 gigs, we should be fine. The things that aren't lifetime would be the wireless access points, for obvious reasons, because the technology is truly changing day by day, more bandwidth, and the routers, and firewalls, excuse me. So, those costs there are not one-time, but they have a lifespan, the core switch, of three to five years. The wireless access points, of course, as instructional needs increase, we may need to address that. But for right now, we have overspec'd a lot of the actual, all of the district, because the slowest speeds are the laptops. They don't have the updated technology that our wireless access points have.
So, you're comfortable with anything we throw at you in terms of growth, or whatever?
I agree.
Magical educational initiatives we do?
As of right now, correct.
Do we have a sense of what the investment is that we have in applications and software?
As far as price, we can, well, we, we have 73 applications. How much does it cost us to get there? And then, I assume some of these are like annual maintenance-type things?
Right. So, part of the recommendation of streamlining the purchasing is because right now, the purchasing is done at a building level, in a supervisor department level, so all of that information is not gathered in one place. So, as we streamline that process, we will get a better picture of what we are spending district-wide.
Thank you both very much. Well done.
Thank you.
Okay. Do we book this this evening?
Book this evening.
Mr. Ferris.
Okay. Hi, everyone. Obviously, based on the agenda, you can see we're in the midst of hiring season, so I wanted to thank all the administrators in the audience for helping us in this process. In interviewing our Supervisor K, for Supervisor K-5 position, I want to thank the teachers Maria Gremulia, Kristine Patrowski, Christina Rainey, and Natalie Bajo from our, all four elementary buildings. I'm also for a JK principal position. I want to thank Michaela Tarzian and Craig Alfano, who are in the audience, if you want to wave. Thank you, guys, and thank you for being here, as well as Don Chios. We're currently in the process of interviewing for our Ramapo Ridge principal position. Our first official round will be next week, and we hope to have someone on the Board agenda for May 30. Some highlights. Lisa and I had the opportunity to go to the Our first official RAM will be next week, and we hope to have someone on the board agenda for May 30. Some highlights. Lisa and I had the opportunity to go to the Orin-Gillingham program last night. It was their last night of the, last night of the semester. And I have to thank all of you personally. They are very, very grateful to each of you for this opportunity. So I also want to thank and congratulate Ms. Patty Simons, who's a teacher at George Washington, as well as Joan Zamorski. She's a teacher at Lennapi Meadows. They serve as instructors for the program. We also have to highlight Madison Hager. Nikki Van Ness, her supervisor, is here. She's been selected as one of thirty teachers from a national applicant pool to attend the National Endowment for the Humanity Summer Scholar Program, which is a two-week program held at the University of California. We're really proud of her. She's very excited, and it's a huge national recognition for her and the district. Another piece, Maureen Lynch, who's in the audience, if you want to wave.
Will you hire Maureen?
There we go. Maureen is a supervisor of English Language RTM in the district. She's helped to organize the Bergen County AP Institute through the Bergen County English Supervisors Roundtable. The second institute will occur in early June, where AP English Language and AP English Literature teachers will meet together to share best practices. We also had a visit from Pasca Valley, where our World Language Department served as a model for best practices. They spoke of curriculum and instruction. They looked at how to achieve state and national standards, along with proficiency, as students spiraled through our grades. A lot has been going on. Our math night, Ms. Kim Loesch, the advisor of the Math Honor Society, as well as the Math Honor Society students, in conjunction with Math Naves, and participated in a math night, where students participated in different games with stations. And these students ran the games. And Ms. Loesch, as well as the students, are really excited for the work from that evening. We also had a Solved by Girls program, where schools from Bergen County attended a STEAM experience dedicated to girls in STEAM. Girls in grades four through eight were given different challenge activities to work on as a team. Mawa sent thirty-five female students, many of whom earned a number of awards. They also had female professionals in STEAM-linked professions who were there as well. Mrs. Corella, Mr. Howe, and Mrs. Schaffner served as math coaches throughout the event, along with Danielle Polway, our supervisor of math, and Dr. D'Turo, who's in the audience. Thank you for your efforts.
Don't wait.
And lastly, I finally had the opportunity to meet with Joan Mangan earlier today. We sat down and we talked about her retirement. So I just wanted to formally announce her retirement, because I didn't have the opportunity to do that last time. Mrs. Joan Mangan has served as a teacher in the Mawa Public School District for the past thirty years. The majority of her career at Mawa was spent as a teacher of Home Arts at Ramapo Ridge Middle School until 2011. Mrs. Mangan spent five years teaching remedial math at Lennapi Meadows, returning to Ramapo Ridge in 2016 to teach various exploration classes, including study skills, character education, and Money Matters. Throughout the course of her career, Mrs. Mangan has shown her dedication, professionalism, and caring to her students in a multitude of ways. Mrs. Mangan is proud of the lasting relationship she has formed with her students and colleagues. Ramapo Ridge and Lennapi Meadows schools are better places for having a Mrs. Mangan as part of their faculty, and she will surely be missed in her well-deserved retirement. Joan, by the end, she, she really expressed the relationship she's created here that will be long-lasting. And she, she referred to specific staff members as her family for the rest of her life, so that was really nice to hear. And that's it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I want to quit this evening. Like to announce, see, well, Mr. Pascal was happy to announce, let us know, that Senior Lindsay Nolan won the 2018 O'Brien Scholarship sponsored by the Celtic Irish American Academy. The O'Brien Scholarship, which is an essay competition, presents high school students with the opportunity to display their ideas, beliefs, and of course, their writing skills. Using the inspiring words of JFK, this year's essay is entitled "Leadership and Learning Are Indispensable to Each Other." Lindsay will be joining other high school students for the U.S. High School Program in Galway, Ireland. This scholarship is valued at $2,500, so congratulations to Lindsay on this great accomplishment. Board committee reports, so have any reports this evening?
A quick one for policy. You'll see on 15C, we have the second reading and adoption of policies 3282 and 4282, which are guides for social, use of social networking sites for teachers and support staff.
Thank you.
Just quickly, I would just want to highlight that we're renewing the auditor that we began with last year. We had a very good experience last year. I'm happy that we're inviting them to come back and work with us again this year. Negotiations, just prior to today's board meeting, we kind of wrapped our heads around next phase of discussion with the principals' union, and we look forward to making progress there as well. And, and I just want to mention that Linda Zico and I had the opportunity to attend a conference last Friday on student achievement that was sponsored by the New Jersey School Boards Association. It was fabulous. Maybe thirty people, forty people there, educators from all over the state. Kim Harrington, the previous Commissioner of Education, was the keynote speaker. She was fabulous on social and emotional learning. But the program essentially highlighted a variety of programs that were advancing student achievement in different areas. Everything from pre-K, art programming, reordering the science curriculum at the high school, doing physics first, as opposed to in the senior year. And, but the final presentation was a, is a program that was kicked off by Rutgers at a number of schools throughout the state, but the presenters were from Metuchen. And what it was, it was a management, union, sort of administrator collaboration model to engage more people in the decision-making process in our schools, and how that had an effect on improving student achievement. And-
It was excellent. Thank you. We, Michael and I were just so excited about this presentation. As soon as it was over, we said, we're on board, we want to bring it to Mawa. They're willing to send people to our district to meet with the board and administrators and teachers to discuss this. And we're, we also requested the studies by Dr. Rubenstein from Rutgers that show this collaborative effort improves student achievement tremendously. So he's, they're going to email us the studies, which we will share with the board. That was awesome. It was excellent. Thank you very much for taking your time to attend the conference. Anyone else this evening?
Okay, I have Mawa Schools Foundation, I'm the lead from Mawa Schools Foundation, and just wanted to say that Mr. Wenderkowitz and I attended the meeting the other night. And Mawa HSA said that everything, basically from their standpoint, is looking very good for the end of the year, for all our students in the high school. And just wanted me to reiterate that there are still scholarships available, and they are asking seniors to please submit their scholarship applications as soon as possible. And that's all that I have this evening. Do you have any board member remarks or additional comments on any reports or non-agenda items at this moment?
On Saturday, I attended the New Jersey School Board's Legislative Committee meeting, and I brought back some handouts for you. I have mentioned this before, the pass, the pass the trash show protection now is now law. So when a school district falls up about a particular candidate, there's a specific question they have to ask, and has to be answered in a specific way. The other thing is, this is interesting, they're, they're going to bond, they're thinking of floating a $1 billion bond over getting money for it. Four hundred and fifty thousand million dollars will go for county vocational school districts. Fifty million will go for county colleges, and 500 million will go for grants to the cost of school facilities and security projects. This is a Sweeney project. We don't know where it's going to go. They think it may pass, because in their mind, there's something in here for everyone. But again, it puts New Jersey a billion dollars deeper in debt. There's also, you'll notice in one thing we have here, moving county colleges out of the state health benefit program. The school district, the school employees' health benefits has been rising at a terrible rate, 8.4% to 13% for this year, whereas the, the state health benefits have remained stable. The reason is, they meet more frequently than the school district group does, and county colleges are moving out of ours and into theirs to save money. So those are the things I picked up on this past weekend. I'm heading down again to Trenton, possibly on next Thursday, for a joint meeting with the PTA and the Jersey School Boards and legislative groups. And then on the following Saturday, I'm going back to Trenton for the telecon assembly, which we, it's usually very exciting to go to. And that's it.
Thank you very much.
Tommy is driving.
One other thing, Peter and I also attended another Mawa Municipal Alliance program, and I just want to give a shout-out to the Mawa Municipal Alliance. We are so fortunate to have them in our district. They have done so, so many, they have given so many programs that have benefited the parents and students. And the one that we went to the other night was attended by EMTs from all over Bergen County, nurses, Ramapo College students, and community members. So I just want to say, they are just a wonderful organization, and they've done so much for our community.
It was, it was a Narcon presentation. And it was, it was, actually, it was a better presentation than the initial one, oh, two years ago. The fellow's a doctor, and you did a great job with his presentation. And at least, they actually had stations this year, where you go to eight different stations and learn how to put the thing together, which I screwed up. So please, don't do it in front of them.
You have to get it right in front of them.
You're going to be dead.
I'm going to Linda.
So I'm over the dosen, I'll keep that.
Pete, we're not coming to you. Okay. Old Business. May I have a resolution to move on Old Business? Motion to move on Old Business. Mr. Gallows, seconded by Dr. Morthee. Any questions or comments on Old Business? Oh, I need to take a roll call, please.
Ms. Zico.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Gallows.
Yes.
Mr. Kazmarski.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthee.
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
And Ms. Barrett.
Yes.
Now, I'd like to take New Business, A through R. May I have a motion to proceed on that? Mr. Wenderkowitz, seconded by Mr. Kazmarski. Do you have any questions or comments on any of these items? Take roll call, please.
Ms. Zico.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Gallows.
Yes, except I'm standing on check number 090531, and also on item 15C.
Mr. Kazmarski.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthee.
Yes.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
I'm standing on 15C, yes for the rest.
And Ms. Barrett.
Yes.
Now, I would like to move 16A through you. May I have a motion to proceed on that? Mr. Gallows, seconded by Mr. Kazmarski. Any comments, questions, any questions? That's it, please. Ready to go?
I'm sure. What were you moving?
16A through you.
Of course. Ms. Zico.
Yes.
Mr. De Silva.
Yes.
Mr. Gallows.
Yes.
Mr. Kazmarski.
Yes.
Ms. Conoco.
Yes.
Dr. Morthee.
Uh, yes, but I'm going to abstain on 16M.
Mr. Wenderkowitz.
Yes.
And Ms. Barrett.
Yes.
Okay. Public questions. Yes, congratulations. Congratulations.
I didn't introduce Rick. Rick Takarski is also our other architect. I'm so sorry. I didn't do it on purpose, but I'm so sorry. I forgive you. That's a good answer.
Public questions or comments? This section of public participation will be limited to fifteen minutes. On any item that you would like to discuss. Changing our schools.
Evelyn Slachbar, 43, please. So just, so Mr. Pascal sent out another letter about this whole situation at the high school with the driving. Do we have any update on the traffic study that was done by the police department? And are we moving forward? What's the-
Mr. Blicker will be setting up a meeting short.
Okay.
For our facilities committee to take a look at that study, and perhaps other interested parties to take a look at it, see what that means.
Okay, great. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Good evening. John Feasen, 20, Falcon Court, Mawa, New Jersey. On the STEM building, congratulations on that. Was the bid, was the bid that you accepted the lowest bid?
Yes.
And what was the highest bid?
$1,030,000 over.
So like $5,001,000 or something.
Four, nine, and change. Do you want to know the exact?
No, no, no. About a million dollars.
About a million dollars.
Thank you very much. At the last meeting, I requested to look at the new history book.
And you came in and did it.
And I did it.
On the couch. On the couch.
Two days later.
I was going to ask.
I spent about ninety minutes, and I was very impressed. It was quite a book, and it's really a-
You read the whole thing?
I memorized.
Did they offer you coffee?
I remember everything. But I was really impressed that you need a password to read the book, you know, for, to really get beyond just the pages. And my history book was simply, you know, in a high school, grammar school, just page after page of words. This is filled with visuals and everything else. I mean, every page is a show. It's amazing.
So you agree with it's a doctor?
And you could do everything. So I was very impressed. And it was shiny, too, so I was very impressed.
You did that on purpose.
You know?
You can make the paperback covers now for all our students.
Yes, with the ShopRite. There's no ShopRite anymore. The bags are gone, it's all plastic. But I'm very glad to see the photography club was approved, but it says seventeen and eighteen. We're almost done with eighteen. Is that for eighteen and nineteen?
It's going, yeah, it's going, was approved this, this year, but it's going forward.
Because there's so many things happening in Mawa that we need to take a record of. You know, at the council meetings, there's usually a note to say, congratulations to some organization, or some individual who's been around for thirty years or so. And the family takes a photo, but that's it. We lose it. It's gone. So that's great, the photography club, and we can make a record of these things. So when we're all not here, people will be here and they'll say, oh, look at this, they approved the STEM building, you know, look what they, you know, everything else.
Like Mr. Feasen, like that history book.
Now, I went to church this weekend, as I always do, and the superintendent of Ramsey was there.
Dr. Murphy.
He loves to talk. And he said the number-one problem in the school system that he's responsible for is mental health. Do you agree with that?
I agree it's one of the things we need to consider. But because he's my friend, yes.
I was, you know, I was kind of taken aback that mental health is the, but then bullying and everything else. But he got up in front of the congregation and brought this to everyone's attention, which was kind of different, you know, because the church is usually at the place they, they talk about that.
That's not perfect.
But he might not, Mr. Feasen might not be aware of what you just put on to the website.
No, he may not be. What he was asking me, though, that's perfect, perfect agreement. You're right about that. One of the things that we, we did, Dennis and I met with two of our parents, very active parents in town, to put a mental health website, a link rather, on our website in regard to mental health. So if you have the opportunity, please check it out.
I have your other BOE website?
It's on, it's on the BOE website, it's under community links, it's under parent links, it's on the-
Headlines.
Parent portal, student portal, it's everywhere. And it's as good for students as it is for parents, or anyone in the community who may want some resources. But that was Stebsky and Miss Pushy, and they did an outstanding, outstanding job. So do I think that it is, you know, the number-one issue? I think it's one of the major issues that we need to consider when we're looking at the whole child, and that's what we need to do.
It's got to be important. It went to church, and apparently, there are other churches doing the same thing.
And Dr. Show and Verden, it was on the website.
I did. Dr. Murphy said it, that it's got to be on the website.
He works in Ramsey, so he's afraid of law.
Yeah, I didn't say that.
Thank you for your time and attention.
Thank you, Mr. Feasen. Thank you, as always.
On the days, well, first of all, I'm white, which is very obvious. I have a black child, so that kind of sets up the story. On the days when I drop my daughter off at Ramapo Ridge, I see a number of black children come off the bus, and I say, huh, thank God, my daughter is not the only black child in the classroom. So then I drive away, and I wonder what it's like for the child, all these children, and children, you know, of color, particularly the African-American children, what it's like to go to school, or prior to school, look at yourself in the mirror in the morning, see who you are, then you go to school. And at school, you see the teachers and administrators, whom are mostly white, the leaders, the people who have power, the role models, most of them are white. Then the child goes home and looks in the mirror again, and maybe he starts to wonder why he doesn't see himself reflected in the people in charge, in the people with power. And maybe she starts to wonder if she's valuable, deserving, important. Maybe he feels sad or mad, and maybe he starts to have an attitude. Then he turns on YouTube and watches music videos. The music is enticing. And now he's drawn in, and he sees a role model that looks like him or her, and that role model is spewing racial slurs, derogatory comments about women, swearing, maybe waving a gun. Now there's a role model that a lot of music producers are getting very rich from. As an adult, you may be able to see this as a form of art that's containing a justifiable rage. But it shouldn't be the only black role model that my child sees on a daily basis. Not all, but many forms of rap music can perpetuate a negative stereotype of black people. It's definitely not a good role model, and it's not the only one, again, that I want my daughter to see on a daily basis. Now, Mr. Vander Mullen, as you said, has moved on, and I hope he finds a fulfilling job and is very hyping. So it sounds like you didn't do it in a week, but I didn't know that before. So the need for a new middle school principal now offers us an opportunity. So how about trying to find a qualified black principal who values education, studying, and character development? Now, being here, I learned a little bit, and I think the seed has already been planted. But why not look for some black teachers? Maybe we could start out with five, who can serve as a role model to the black students, but also to the white students, the Latino students, the Indian students, the Asian students, and the students of other races. So while I have a special concern for my own child, the black children, it actually is good for all kids to have a black woman or man as a leader. Maybe hire a black teacher, a dance teacher, for the after-school hours. So instead of the girls looking at all this nonsense on Instagram and whatnot, there can be someone that's dignified, that shows them how to respect themselves and dance and learn about self-expression. How great would it be if we let these kids know that we care so much about them, that we believe in their future potential, and we want to do everything we can to be fair-minded? So we're not just going to teach about different ethnicities, but we're actually going to diversify our staff, and we're going to seek them out as leaders in our schools, acting as teachers and administrators. How empowering it could be for boys and girls to see themselves reflected in a positive role model on a daily basis? And again, I speak for myself. I'm sure a lot of the black parents are positive role models, but I'm talking about myself, but it's, it's good for all kids. What a great way to instill confidence and self-respect. I think you'd really be surprised at how you can change the inside of a kid. Now, Mawa's a great school district, with great teachers, great administrators, and maybe we can make it a little greater by stretching beyond just reciting the equal-opportunity phrase that we have to state by law, and how it's hard, but it's not impossible. I know corporations all over the world know how to diversify their staff. So maybe connections with the Education Department of Rutgers, maybe headhunters can help, maybe research needs to be done. I don't know who would be in charge of this, but if you need a care group to do this type of research, I am offering my services. So thank you for listening.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Anyone else?
Before we adjourn, I voted in favor of 15R, which is the cell tower at the top of the hill. Now, I did it because, not because of the money, I mean, the amount of money they're offering is, it was a chunk change compared with $70 million budget, which we put out annually. I voted out because the people up in that area, and you're one of them, have no service up there. I feel for safety and for communication, they should have it. But what bothers me with this thing is that, I may call you Diane, because I can't pronounce your last name. Sent a letter to the board, and I had, caused me to go back and look at the proposal, you had it before I had it, the proposal, where they're going to put in a 500-gallon propane tank with, and I look at it carefully, expansion to a 1,000-gallon propane tank, 350 feet from houses. That makes me very nervous. Now, the cell tower at the bottom of this hill is powered by batteries. What I'm asking is you go back to them and say, "Is it possible that we switch to battery power rather than the propane or diesel fuel they're thinking about?" Because that, that site is in the middle of the woods, in other words, not seen from the road. And if someone really got a little crazy and went in there, they could ignite that propane and do terrible damage up there. So I'm asking that, yes, we need that tower, but we also need to protect the people who are up there. And I'm not running for office or anything, I'm just saying it really bothered me, measuring what a thousand gallons of propane would do up there. So that's what I'm asking. If we could go back to them and say, "Can we go to the battery power rather than, rather propane or diesel fuel for generator power?"
Thank you. It's just for the emergency generator? It's a battery.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's right, but it's there. It's sitting there.
Right, but I don't, I think the battery is.
You don't have any tank up there.
I don't know how long, how much battery power do you get for, can you run a cell tower on it for six days?
Well, they're very expensive. They're very expensive. And, but I don't want to put our citizens at danger. I want to help them with communication ability, but I do not want to put people in danger by having a potential 1,000 gallons of propane up there. That's a big bang. So.
To that point, though, Peter, I think the residents that will go to the planning board will voice those concerns as well, and I think the planning board members will take that into consideration.
I hope they do. I want it on record here.
Oh, it is. If it will, this will be part of that record, and they will take that under consideration.
I was a little taken aback when suddenly the citizens are coming to me before I had it, through our normal method of receiving information, long before I had it. That was bothering me. And I've never met you before, and I'm sorry. That's all I have to say. I'm done.
Thank you.